True. I think I can pass pass a lot of tests over the years.
Listen, you can't tell.
This is a test.
So you just keep doing it until you do it.
This is a test, but if if you give an answer, they say whoops, strike again.
Yeah. So try and remember whatever you said the first one as you work your way down.
Yeah, it's the type of thing that it's almost like it's set up for you to fail different because there are two answers that are pretty close, you know, makes you think about it.
Yeah.
I actually remember falling asleep at the chamber or something.
I can't work this one. Oh, I just figured since, yeah, uh, I was told this is working again, but I figured, uh, though tried and true, I I I had very few problems with this over the years. So, uh, I figured if I brought this, I know this'll work, you know, you know, so I'm just hoping that this all actually what it's supposed to do. Talents and surprises. Yes, oh, yeah. It would be surprised.
Because we've filled it out a pretty decently.
Testing one, two, three, testing, 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 one, two, three.
It's your father, right? Yeah. Yeah, that was your.
I heard we made it by the school this week, but they finally have one of the high pieces for gemma.
That well, it comes this because it's it's in that intersection.
Well, I haven't seen it. A lot of the artworks there and a lot of the, um, structures put on the solid area.
So it depends on.
They have.
Nine one one.
Yeah, yeah.
For the public safety, yeah, like they use the business address.
That's closer.
They were there on Sunday night and drove by.
I went looked at the.
Yeah, they're trying to get everybody into.
Two different addresses, gotta be enough because I had to.
Trying to get the very.
So looking at the intersection, there's kind of like.
Yeah, I think I should be also, you know, ready like Don, give me like ten seconds just to.
You guys ready?
Run it.
Yep.
Where's makeup? Makeup?
You gotta press your wardrobe.
We're going, uh, turn up the volume, testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
Oh, we do.
No.
That's really nice, yeah. Let's record it. I wait now. So stuff this recorded to just as a backup.
That'll be going to you.
All right, so here on.
Ready? Yeah, all right, we open our meeting, it is, uh, Monday, November fifth, two thousand twelve, seven o'clock, right, it's six twenty two.
It's pretty early.
Start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, under God, in the name of the. Right. We got, uh, a couple of things to do, you all are on at six thirty, so just hang on for a few minutes. Uh, we have minutes of our open session about October twenty second. I did them today, if you all had a chance to read them.
Yeah.
Any issues with the minutes?
Nope.
Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes about October twenty second?
I made the motion to approve the minutes of October twenty second, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Second, Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
And then Don, do you wanna move the payroll warrant?
Uh, payroll warrant number thirteen dash eighteen, one hundred twenty seven thousand, five hundred, ten thousand and sixteen cents.
Um, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm Eddie, you're in the same room, the deduction one, and then you can boot that on the payroll warrant, you move the other two together.
Staying.
Yeah, deduction warrant thirteen dash sixteen and twenty two thousand, six hundred sixty seven dollars and twenty three cents. And the warrant thirteen there seventeen, eight hundred forty thousand, seven hundred thirty six dollars and two cents.
Second, Betty?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, we have property use permits on the table aside, we have Bagnall Building. Bagnall Building bills, 'cause they have three times fast.
Bills, change orders, contracts, all sorts of that stuff.
Yeah. Um. So everything's on schedule down there, Greg, as far as we know?
Uh, they're a little bit behind in my mind, um, but we're working to push them as fast as we can. I'm very, I'm very happy with the guys putting up the cement block, they are flying, I'm a little bit disappointed in how fast the steel's going up, it seems to almost be slowing them up at this point. The whole goal of it is to get the roof on, get it weather tight, so they can start working on the inside before winter comes.
Yeah.
Can they work all winter?
They are going to work all winter.
When is it supposed to be done, the gym?
We're trying to push for the cafeteria part to get done first, so we can move the children, if they start having lunch, they have the tail end of this school year.
Yeah.
And they can start working on the renovations to be able to.
Right, same here.
Because if if we can't get them to do that, we're gonna have to carry the crews longer than we anticipated, it'll be a little bit of extra money to carry them forward. So we're trying to push them into that area as fast as possible.
If, um, you talk about the walls, the concrete going up, this has nothing to do with this, but we have a minute or two. My dad, obviously older than me, I'm now, he was growing up in Kentucky, they built, you know, they little had time, they're building new Jemayze, but this was during World War Two. So they put the bricks up, but then there was no steel because all the steel had to go to New Orleans, so it's like four or five years. And I think they even put the floor down before they, uh, had a roof.
Really? Oh, wow.
Uh, it's funny, just funny that things changed, you know?
And the top for the wet top.
Yeah, yeah, so.
The idea, I mean, the block is, the block will go up, this block goes up, the idea is to try to get the brick to start to go up before it gets really cold, or else you have to start putting conditions under warm and things like that in there.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, that costs a little extra money too, obviously, if you have to heat the outside of the building while you're trying to put brick up. So we're trying to push along as fast as humanly possible, but should be weather tight by the middle of December.
No, no delays with the bad weather, it.
It caused no issue.
Did no blocking.
Uh, the the front end had some pumps because the old roof drains from the existing structure were being, we're putting a new drainage system into the ground. And when we ran the water lines, it was right where that was supposed to go, so they had to change the, what do they call those, the round thing, from a five to a four and change it. So the one was basically coming off the roof and going into a hole because the diverter hadn't been put in yet. So they can't, he was coming down every three hours at night and turning the pump on and pumping the water out of the hole, so we had no damage down there at all. There was the contractor's site person was doing that, he was a listening person, it was just.
I have the super.
I did too, I was gonna say, wow.
He lives close, huh?
Yeah, he does, he could do it, tell him we suggested it.
I don't.
I think he's a good guy, he seems to be working with everybody.
No, he seems like a great investment, he's, uh, yeah, the site's moving along as quickly as possible, we have construction meetings every Wednesday and.
Yeah.
So far, other than getting the subs to move as fast as humanly possible, not, 'cause there will give and take on change orders, some things were law, take away some things here and there, but definitely gonna keep this under budget, 'cause we really have to, there's no choice, right?
Yeah, you can't.
No choice.
No, you can't go, I I I made that point abundantly clear in every meeting, there is no more money coming, at all, don't even think about it, don't even care of it, right, so.
And you can't get done for a budget.
It will.
Should be able to, no problem.
Okay. All right, we still have, we have to actually wait till six thirty, right? And so we have, uh, two more minutes here for that, we have, uh, correspondence.
What is that?
Number one, see attached letter from builder builders, um, I guess there's complaint about some treatment he felt he had, is that something that we we wanna talk about at some point, we just got this today.
Yeah, we haven't had much time to.
Well, you know, it.
Now, should they send that to the, to the board of assessors?
I believe they should.
Yeah, I don't think it should come to us.
Because it's not.
Well, he probably didn't know.
What is it?
It's just a letter that he is potentially wanting to not have a bad experience, but he's anticipating.
But it deals with the assessing department.
It deals with evaluation of property in any way, shape or form?
No.
No.
That's personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think it should go, uh, to the, the, the board first because they're the elected board, I mean, we really have no, we really have no.
We only have the employee, not us.
Yeah, I suppose, but I guess we do, because they do that all the time.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have, uh, number two, see attached request sketch of Groveland Historic Society chairman to install fence on three sides of building. As she had field, property is ready to be shown to potential renters. Uh, needs to be declared, she could come down here on seven thirty, I don't think we need to speak with her. Um. Does anybody have any problems with the fence?
The, the only, I mean, we went, we went down and met with the, um, soccer people.
Uh. Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they have limited spaces, it is for the parking there, I don't know if this is gonna create a bigger problem.
I don't. Well, maybe, it'd be, isn't it?
Did you see that, did you see the drawing?
Because I want it to come all the way out to Main Street, so it's gonna take all the, the space in front of the building, eighteen feet to the left of it, all the way to the main road.
Is that gonna be a hindrance for, um, anybody dragging along there, or Jimmy Sheen trying to get out of his driveway or anything like that? Is it view going to be defeated or whatever?
Well, I mean, I don't know about that, but, I mean.
Is that.
I think she's talking about posted rail fence.
Oh, not, not.
If, if it's posted rail.
The back, I think it said privacy, if you have, doesn't anyone have.
Oh. Okay. So that's a whole of their land, or the land designated for that building, or is that?
It, it's actually the whole, the building only has the space of the building, I think, I mean, for historical, the rest of it's all above town. Um, but they have custody of the building, I believe that's all.
Well, it's kind of like the situation with the length of the, the whole property is under the control of you guys, and at one point you allowed them to put a building on it. I don't think it was granted to have any more space on the map.
Right.
Obviously you can grant to give them more space, but.
Yeah, I don't, I look at this as, uh, as a little apartment because essentially a condo. And I think, I, I guess I didn't, I didn't understand my apologies when I was reading this, uh, I was looking at this, but this actually shows at eighteen feet to the left. Right. And then, I, I don't think it needs a lot of spacing, I mean, maybe put something behind there to have a little bit of room, you know, but you don't need one on all four sides. I think the front where that fence is, is fine, one that's existing, right, I think the one that's, we'll add to the left is fine. It just, uh, and then maybe they, they put the fence in behind there, I can see doing that to, uh, get some privacy, but it's not a big one, it's not a, it's essentially a freestanding condo, we don't have.
So you're saying no, no to the eighteen feet on the side.
Correct.
But it looks like there's probably like four feet already, 'cause I'm looking at the posted rail fence.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's three feet, but I would imagine you wanna leave a little space on the side.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, leave it where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. In front, leave it where it is. We got parking spot and then.
In spring, when we went down there and we had met with all the soccer people and neighbors, um, the soccer people were talking about making some changes to provide more parking. Is this going to hinder anything they want to do?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it came out eighteen feet on the side, that may mess with their access going in.
Yeah.
Um, losing sixteen feet in the back is probably like losing two or three five in space, it's probably not a huge hindrance, but I don't know that they got that money, that they were hoping to get it on the back.
You know, I hate to tell one group.
Right.
To make some plans and then we do something that's going to change. You know, I, I know Bobby R. Gallion was there that day, we talked about moving trees, some of those pretty trees that are down there that are worth a lot, a lot of money. And we keep hearing about moving trees, how that doesn't always work out.
Right.
Also, I believe, uh, I was in contact with Mr. Merrill, we had spoken about whether it was okay that, we, a long time ago, some CPA money was authorized for design work down there. And then it would, when we found out that you couldn't do that anymore, stopped. And then they changed the CPA law again this year, reactivated it.
I just read, I just read that.
And I called up on be, on their behalf and said if it had been previously authorized, is it okay now to reauthorize it, or does that go back to town meeting, he said, no, you can just go ahead. So I informed, I informed them of that, and I think they've hired a, a person to draw up exactly some of the stuff you're talking about, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, you know, I think at this point, we tell them to advertise as is, and then we're working on a plan for the area, I don't think we should be putting any, uh,
Right.
I agree.
anything permanent there, and they can advertise the building because we're working on the lots.
Yeah, I, because it's limited space, we're working with and we're trying to appease everyone.
Yeah. So, do we need to vote on that, or do we just leave it to them?
No, that's fine.
All right, we just passed six thirty?
We made it.
Right.
Wait, I just have to read this before you guys are up. Excuse me, Town of Groveland Board of Selectmen liquor license transfer hearing, this is dated October sixteenth, two thousand twelve. Uh, just notice the Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fifth, two thousand twelve, at six thirty P M. At Town Hall, one eighty three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. On the application for transfer of a retail package goods store, all alcoholic beverage, beverages licensed from Route ninety seven Liquors, Inc. Nine oh eight dash D Salem Street, Groveland, Mass, to Route ninety seven Quick Pick, Inc. One thousand eight South Street, Rosendale, Mass, DBA Route ninety seven Liquors. Debianni, difference. S, Italian Post Manager, description of premises, unit nine oh eight dash D Salem Street, Groveland, Mass, one room on first floor, sales and walk-in cool storage and rear门is signed by me, it was advertised. Uh, of legal ad, email to evil Tribune, legal ad department on ten sixteen twelve, for insertion to legal ad section of evil Tribune, newspaper on Monday, October twenty second, two thousand twelve. All right, fire away.
Um, my name's Craig Verndon, I'm attorney in Chestnut Hill, uh, this is Debianni Patel, sees the applicant as the owner and manager of, would, uh, transfer of the liquor store license for Route ninety seven Liquors to Route ninety seven Quick Pick, Inc. Do you have any questions at this time?
Um, I, I'm just curious.
It doesn't, it doesn't say what the square footage of the area is, I figure it must have had that.
Oh, the, uh, there's a plan.
Of the space.
Yeah, there is a plan. We're just looking at it over and going, yeah.
About nine hundred, one square feet.
Yeah, it's nine hundred.
Has it?
Do you like to use the table, sir, I can move to that.
Nine hundred, nine hundred and thirteen point seven five square feet.
Close it up.
All right. So it's basically the same business that's already in there?
Right. It is the same business, it's just a trans, they're buying the business.
Okay. Transplant ownership.
Exactly.
Bill has the whole factor of.
I've been over here.
Do you wanna?
They're not looking to change the size or anything like that, they're buying the name.
Betty, do you have any questions?
No, um, I don't, how many people will be working two, two?
At all times, or just every?
Um, not just, you know, when the busy time would be.
Busy times, yeah.
Morning E M would be just one person in the.
Right.
All right, uh, I don't have any questions, does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the transfer?
I make the motion to approve the transfer, this is.
Second on?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Thank you.
Also, thank you for coming in.
We need to sign this, I'll sign these two copies.
Greg, if you want to.
You two are popular.
I recently purchased the building from John Malone's.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a cop facilitating the event, see, I came in here, nine hundred and thirteen square.
See?
That's what she knows everything.
Well, they're gonna be looking for the other seven.
It's not siding. You know what's.
Oh, I.
Yeah, that's because.
My phone is.
It's not.
I'm on the two copies. Sorry.
I mean, if any specific contract, she would certainly want to.
Yeah.
Then you know.
I put you down.
I, yeah, they usually.
Nothing to do with their life, you have nothing to do with your life.
You never go to the A C C.
I thought it was the rest of the pack and.
Oh, yeah, Lord.
Oh, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Over many drinks, after a few years, after a few months of.
But I had some great people come.
This isn't. Same thing you do before?
Go sell the minus, okay?
There you go. Is everything okay?
Does anybody have?
Mike, is he okay?
Good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it, we are forward to do business with the town, see you, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Try to figure out. I'm just doing very well. Yeah, so can I just load it to YouTube so I can watch it?
I'm sure you guys will film, right?
All right, um. As near as I can tell, everything that's in front of me has been accomplished. Um, I do have, I know that we spoke last time of, uh, of, uh, bring up the old dirty laundry, um, minutes for our, uh, meetings, and we didn't meet, uh, about, because I had a question about the minutes that I voted to approve, and, uh, I think they're in error. I had emailed, as we spoke, uh, last time, I emailed our town council, Brian Hazer. And email me back, this is Tuesday, October twenty third, says it's addressed to me. In my opinion, the board may go back and amend the minutes to accurately reflect what transpired during the executive session. As the minutes should accurately reflect what was discussed during the session, I believe the old meeting law would encourage, while not explicitly, explicitly stating as such that if an error or omission subsequent to filing approved minutes, the public body should revisit the minutes and revise them to actively reflect what occurred during the executive session. Uh, I'd like to put it on our read again for next time, I know that, uh, we didn't have a chance to talk about it, I, I still, and if we're not gonna vote to change it, I, I'm gonna put something in that, uh, a, a, a statement that I believe, uh, how things actually transpired, this is all serious business, I've been lax in the past. I kind of, I'm a trusting person, I just kinda, and I'm also, it, it's bad, I should've, I should've read everything carefully, I did not, there are things in there that shouldn't be, and it, and it's serious repercussions. I mean, uh, we've all had ethics commission complaints filed against us, I know who filed, I mean, I'm pretty sure now who filed against us. Um, I think it's awful, it's completely untrue, uh, and I would like the minutes accurate, accurately reflect what happened, I trusted people, and one of the complaints, uh, a meeting that occurred on March fourteenth. I trusted people, that we were all talking, and we knew what was going on, and, and obviously you can't trust people, it is, it's just bad. So I, I would like to at some point, uh, if I'm gonna have something prepared for next time, at least add them to the minutes of that meeting, saying that I believe the minutes of the previous meeting were error. If Don, it's up to me, you know, if you choose not to vote to change them, then I will just, uh, add that, uh, statement to the minutes. Um, it also brings me back to another piece of information, that piece, and another, uh, issue that they're trying to deal with, I, I still, and I wanted, stated for the minutes, I still want to do a review of our police department. Now, I know, Don, you don't wanna do that, you don't think it's necessary, I want to do it, I want to hire an outside agency to do it, I still think it's something that is important to be done. Greg, you're here, I mean, we spend lots of money on legal bills, we've had lots of issues, police related lately, um, I don't expect you to tell me how much those bills cost, but I know it's, it adds up. Uh, insurance, anytime we have a, we've had a couple of different, uh, complaints filed against the town, does that affect our insurance bills or no?
Well, there's a deductible, if we, if they have to defend us in any cases, we pay a deductible, yes.
How much is our deductible?
For legal, five thousand.
Five thousand, so we have to pay that, and then insurance takes over.
Yeah, how it affects future rates, they depend, it, it depends on the outcome of those things, whether they're not, they're true, false, what you're gonna pay, becomes your experience rating going forward.
So, Don, I mean, and you, you still don't think it's something that you think we should do at this point?
I, I, I don't know, I mean, it just seems like throwing money away to me, I mean.
I think, but, but I think we're throwing a lot of money away when we're fighting all these things, it's completely changed how we do business here. Um, at some point, whether, if we don't do it, uh, I guess when I'm not on the board, I could, i, what is, I'll have to find that out, I, I'm not a big fan of petitions, but, uh, I guess that's, would be the next, uh, thing to try to get the board to do something. Can I do that after I'm not on the board anymore?
Mm-hmm.
Or is there a waiting period, like, I, I'm just a regular person, at that point I could file a petition to the board to put something in.
Um, I've, I've, I've had the question asked about a selectman right away doing something.
I have to find that out. Yeah. I, I suppose, if, but if anybody else wanted.
It's not a financial thing to you.
Yeah, if somebody else wanted to, to, to put up a petition to ask us to get something going, I suppose that could happen too. Like, I couldn't be involved in it, we talked about that with, uh, and I haven't talked to anybody, I'm just saying that I, I want this thing to happen, I want it to be on the record that I want this to happen, um. I, I, I think it makes sound management sense to do it, we do audits of our, I, do we still do the audits of our, our, our financial condition every year?
Sure.
And part of that audit is a management letter, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes. Yes.
You know, I just think it makes sense, we spent however much money every year to do that, I just think it makes perfect sense to do, we're a big department, um, I'd like to see it happen, and if anybody else wants to see it happen, I'd like to s, have them try to do something about it. Uh, just something like that.
I don't even know if I can address the concerns you have right now, because it's made us all so very gun shy, and I think that's a, a plan, that was calculated move. Um, I'm very concerned about how those minutes left this room and got to Boston. I just don't get it, and I don't understand how that happens.
I don't know.
Um.
I mean, they can make, all the, it's public information, they can certainly make requests with our minutes, right?
But don't they have to let us, who's requesting? It's not, you just can't walk in here and say, I want minutes from March whatever, and.
Should we, should we be locking our office when we're not here?
You, you, this, this room is open for constant meetings.
That's what I mean, everything is just like free access to walk in here.
Yeah.
But, I mean, many other boards use this room for their meetings, I believe.
They do, and, and, and other boards that have their own rooms, they lock up all their stuff in file cabinets and everything when they're not there, you know?
Yeah. Right, they do.
So, I guess, you know, if we left things in our room and people took them, copied them, did whatever they did, it, it happens, I guess.
Yeah, that's really good. Definitely.
Yeah, lots of people have reviews and audits of anything at any given time, um, you know, who, who, what are people gonna check our financials?
I mean, you thought, can I go back to.
The oil handling firm?
Yeah.
Powell's and Sullivan.
Powell's and Sullivan, yeah.
I go back to, I'm not a police officer, and I can't conduct a review, I mean, if it was something that I knew about, I mean, I'm just, I, I, I look back at, uh, our recent history, and I, I'd like to know that everything's on track.
So what is it you're actually looking for?
I wanna know what they think about how things are being run, good, bad, or indifferent. I see that, it's.
So, so they're gonna go in and look at paperwork and they're gonna.
No, they're gonna talk to people, they're gonna talk to everybody, and, and talk about procedures and policies, and is that how, how things should be run? Is that, uh, a good way to do things? I mean, I know that we are talking to lawyers all the time, and you may disagree with me and say that it's always been the case, but it hasn't always been the case. Been here for a long time, and, I mean, we've never had problems at all, we've never had to deal with lawyers all the time. Now we can't talk to anybody without having a lawyer present.
It's handcuffed the board.
And, and all that costs money.
And if somebody were asked to clean up something, what's the cleanup about? Who, who, I don't understand, you said those words to be done, we asked him to do, you know, we asked someone to do some whatever, whatever you said, um.
I just.
But I don't know what's, what's.
I wa, I wanted to do this last year, I mean, well, not last year, but, you know, beginning of this year. It's part of the negotiation, I didn't think would happen in a, in a in expedient enough time, so I let it go, but I never, I, I always intended to do it, we had a meeting in June. I mean, where I brought it up, and I was accused of, you know, I don't know what, trying to hire somebody that I'm in bed with apparently to come up with some bad review, I didn't know these people at all. Talked to the guy once on the phone, he's one of the four or five people in state that do it, but I had said, fine, whatever, you know? If, if our chief thinks that this is somebody I know and wants somebody else, I, I don't care, there's only a few people that can do it. Or somebody knows what they're doing, come down, I just, yeah, it's not gonna be my problem much longer, you know, like, this is October, six more months. But I, I don't know, as far as I'm concerned, the way that our business is conducted now is the worst ever in my eighteen years here, ever. And I know it goes, it, it consolves to everything that has come forth from that building next door, yeah, good, bad, or indifferent, so what I wanna know is, what's going on? Are we doing things properly? Is the taxpayer, the, the town resident being represented properly? I don't see where, you know, we have all these, these, at least two complaints against us, that we have to defend, these discrimination complaints, I mean, are we doing things properly? I don't think as a, as a supervisor, that's a bad question to ask, and that's what I told the state ethics commission when they were interviewing me, and when I sent in my supposedly five recommended pages, I spilled over to a sixth page, um, that's what I asked them, I said, am I not allowed to ask questions as a supervisor? Can I not ask what's going on, or does that become, oh, I'm pressuring somebody into doing something? I just wanna know, I was elected to do a job, and I'm not sure that, uh, I want to know that what's going on is, is good, is right.
Well, what we could do, I mean, on those two cases you're talking about, can you get us the insurance company information, we can talk to whoever the investigator is there? And find out if they think that something's being done, huh? I guess that's some place for me to start.
I'm not sure, I mean, obviously they're booked through board to the insurance company, after that, I'm not sure exactly where they are. I just get them in the system basically, and after that, it kinda gets handled outside my office, I just make sure the filings are done, that they're informed of it, that there's potential cases out there. Because there's only, you only have so many hours to get yourself reported, so I just make sure that part, because it's done after that. because there's so many, you only have so many hours to get yourself reported, so I just make sure that part of it gets done, after that, the investigation stuff starts, but I suppose I can give you the name of the insurance company, contact people, and they can do that with you. Okay, I don't really track the cases once I do the filing, just to make sure if they did that stuff.
'Cause, I mean, Brian has told us the same thing, every time we've talked to him, we've all, uh, things being handled properly, and he keeps telling us that they are, so, I mean.
I, you, maybe legally, I guess, I I don't know, but I I'm talking about just how a department is run, procedures wise, how just everything that goes on there, I mean, why are we, why are we, why are we having all these things, apparently there's lots of bad apples over there that are getting fired one at a time, and I'm just not sure that, I mean, is that, is that really the case, maybe it is. They can tell me, you know, you are all wet, you're wrong, you you know, everything is fine, I I mean, the insurance, the lawyers, like, 'cause, I mean, that one guy called me at some point, he must've called you all too, you know, to talk about, I can't remember which one it was, and and of course, you know, they're defending the town, so they're trying to find out, you know, and defend the town, they're not gonna, although, I mean, lawyers will usually ask you if you can win or not, I guess, I don't think it's gotten that far. But I'm not even talking just about the legal stuff, I'm just talking about, I I, 'cause I don't even know, I haven't even looked into it, I don't know it it a hundred percent what a management review of the police department entails. What I'm trusting is that, just like I don't know a hundred percent what an audit of whatever entails, and I'm trusting that the people that we hire know what they're doing and are gonna do it. And that's what I'm saying, you know, there's certain people that their area of expertise is police departments, they come in, they talk to people, they see how things are run, they they come in, I imagine they issue a management letter, just like our, our auditors do, they're not looking at anything financial, so it's not gonna be numbers, it's gonna be, yeah, these policies, procedures are good, that, diff- different, this needs to be tightened up, this, whatever, and, I mean, we saw in our management reports for a long time, we used to get the same ones over and over, and that wasn't good, when they keep telling you the same thing over and over is wrong, you need to fix it. So, that's all, and I know I've asked our police ch- we've talked about with our police chief, he keeps telling me he's, has no problem with it, but, but first I want my contract, but the timing is interesting now, but why are you doing this? Obviously, there's a problem, because every time I brought it up, he has a problem with it, I would think he would encourage it, would welcome it, he says things are fantastic, there's no problems. I would think that, uh, that we just back them up a hundred percent. But that's not the answer we get, we get to go down and talk to ethics commission about things that never happened. So, anyway, that's, that's it, I'm, I just, I I just want it out there that I am on the record that I still want this to happen, okay? So somewhere down the road when people say, why didn't you do it, I'll say, hey, listen, I tried, that's all.
And not all of us can vote on that.
You can vote on it, Betty. So if Don chooses not to, then it's, it's one to one, I asked our lawyer that night when we were here a couple of months ago, and it, it, nothing happens, you don't bring a, a third person to break the tie, it's just, it just doesn't happen, so. Unless some creative town's residents decided they wanted to do something about it. As much as I hate that. I'm gonna stop talking before I head up to Town of Boston for another two hours.
Um, I see we got a thank you card from, um, the Stewart family, thanking us for the, uh, the tribute to Jim up at Bezi. Um, they did a nice job, the veterans and the Boy Scouts, and and everybody involved, um, it was, it was a nice thing.
I heard it was nice, um, that was the anniversary of Barry's death, so I wasn't able to conduct it, but I did call Penny Hamilton and David Tuttle.
There, there was a nice group.
When is the, uh, Veterans Day service?
Monday, ten thirty.
Monday?
We can tell you this. Veterans Day is Sunday, eighteen forty one.
Veterans Day is this Sunday?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good.
It'll be shown, the, uh, ceremony will be here, it'll be shown live on TV. We hope. We were a bit cowardly, hadn't we?
The, um, Groveland, the GAC committee's meeting Thursday night. Grovelands, what is it?
I thought you guys were supposed to come up with a good name.
That's it, GAC.
The government advisory committee.
GAC.
GAC.
I thought they had to come up with a good name before we started.
Yeah, well, that's the best thing.
What does that stand for?
I don't know.
Government Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Our governmental advisory committee or something.
Yeah.
No, I got a letter and an email from Dan McDonald, and I, of course, I did try calling one time, but I haven't got back for the, for, ask some questions, did you all get that too?
Yeah, I, I did, I talked to one phone.
He sent an email with the questions.
I said, I told him I'm not putting anything in email, you, you and I can talk on the phone.
Yeah. I don't know, somewhere somebody's recording that, Betty.
I guess so.
Can't be too careful.
I'll grab the rally.
Think they need the old string and, uh,
Yeah.
tin can.
Uh, there is, there is something on your table that has unfortunately has to be dealt with.
What's that?
It's a request for reserve fund expenditure.
Yeah.
The State Appellate Tax Board has ruled that all the valuations for Verizon from two thousand two to two thousand nine were in error.
Uh-oh, that doesn't sound good.
It isn't good, uh, potentially, basically, there are, every city and town in the Commonwealth owes Verizon money. Uh, in some cases, in Boston, millions.
Well, tell us about Groveland.
I'll tell you about Groveland, Verizon, to their credit, realizes this, and they have basically said, any city or town that settles with us just for the refund we're due for fiscal year two thousand and nine, and we have the check by the end of November, we will waive all the prior years.
Amnesty?
But how bad is this year?
Okay, this is how it gets handled now, the state sent out an edict figuring no one in their right mind would not take advantage of this, because, I mean, it's either this or this times nine. Uh, to us, it's twenty two thousand.
Yeah.
What happens is, we will pay that money out of two thousand nine overlay, that's money we keep aside, which will make our two thousand nine short, but we can transfer and cover that in special town meeting before the end of the fiscal year. The second part of the edict is narrow interest at the same rate that we charge people when they're late to us. That has to come from an appropriation account, the interest total is six thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy two cents. We all seen the town's expense accounts, they're not, they're three thousand, they're four thousand, there's no account that can handle that, even if you like, you you could hit mine now, but I would run out of money before we did the transfers in the spring, so you can't write any more checks, paper posted, or whatever, if you don't have any money in your account, simple enough reason. So that leaves us with expended out of the reserve account for an unforeseen expense. Uh, you guys would have to vote to approve that, the finance committee would vote to have to approve that, I have informed Bill Cook, the acting chair right now at the finance committee, that he's gonna have to schedule the meeting before next Wednesday night, before, before next Wednesday night ends, so we can process the check so it would be available before the end of this month. I told him I would let him know whether or not you guys approve this idea tonight, and then he can schedule his meeting.
So it's six thousand something, is that what you said?
Six thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy two cents on the twenty thousand.
We haven't spent anything, yeah.
We, last year we didn't spend a penny out of it.
What's the twenty two thousand?
That's.
That, that's why, that's the, the actual amount that you would get, that you'd have to pay them back just for fiscal two thousand nine, now imagine that, eight, seven, six, obviously, this is a no brainer.
So it's only, it's less.
But less than thirty thousand.
Much, much less time, you know, twenty two thousand versus two hundred thousand. Obviously, Verizon's being very nice, because, I mean, this would triple places.
What, now, how do you have that, what?
The state gives valuations for all the public utilities, in other words, they'll say, send out an edict to the assessors office, saying, this is the valuation of the pipelines to national grid, the power lines and national grid,
Yeah.
the poles and wires for Verizon, the poles and wires for Comcast, they they'll, they'll give you a number, and that's what we touch. Verizon appealed how the state was doing that to the appellate tax board of the state, and the appellate tax board said, you know what, you're right, they did it wrong. So, there's really no, I don't know what our appeal process would be, the appeal process of the appellate tax board, they've already ruled, so it's, this is kind of a no brainer. So, I recommend that we.
I can't, Verizon's let everyone off.
I know.
I, I.
Greg, are they gonna pass it on to the right payers after they?
Really?
I, I, I don't speak with Verizon corporate going to deal.
They're gonna take it off the right pays. Or they give us a rebate because they're getting some back?
I have no idea what they're gonna do, with their private, with your private phone bills, but we're here to deal with right now, what's in the best interest of Town of Groveland, this is a no brainer.
So what's the amount we have to do a transfer?
Six thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy two cents, the assessors can do the other check out of their overlay, that's their prerogative, if it's two thousand nine, but the interest can't, can't come out of the overlay.
So going forward, we're gonna get a lot less tax revenue?
No. Ten, eleven, and we're fine.
It's up, it's, it's right, now it's been corrected, right?
Right, it's, they appealed from two thousand nine forward, I asked that question specifically, what does that mean now for ten, eleven, this year, twelve?
Right, but I mean, going forward now.
No, no, we're fine, wherever we got, the, the evaluation system is now correct.
Right, but we're gonna get less, less tax income.
Well, we would have been, because ten, eleven, and twelve were right, so we've been already acting on the correct formula for three years. It took a while, I guess, for this to wind its way through the system. Oh, no, that was my, my very first question, is are we gonna lose twenty two thousand dollars in income next year, or if I have normal, twenty five thousand in new growth, in other words, that'll be flat, that was assured, no, we, the system has been fixed, it's already been factored in the last three years, so it's not gonna affect us that way. My recommendation is, this is a no brainer.
Yeah, just do it.
Yeah, so we're gonna make a motion and we approve the six thousand and, how much is it?
Six thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy two cent paid for the interest on the Verizon settlement, I'll make the motion.
Reserve, okay, second Betty?
Second.
Paul Taylor, goodbye.
Thank you.
Anything else, Greg?
No, just a lot of writing for you.
Right. All right.
Just.
Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'm rushing to adjourn.
Second Betty?
Second, Paul Taylor. Aye.
And Austin texted me to say goodnight to him, so, goodnight, Austin.
Oh, we, we just can't, you say, you can tell him in person.
I don't.
I don't think Austin texted yet, does he?
Okay, there you can.
Goodnight, Austin.